The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Kotar, Alderwoman Rice, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Valmer, Alderwoman Martin, Alderman Ornowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderman Odenberg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Todd, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacoro, Alderman Orion, Alderman Con, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Navarro, President Reed, Alderwoman Tyus, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Kotar, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Vacoro, eighteen present.
Quorum being present, I ask everyone in the chambers and galleries who's able to stand to please rise for prayer. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, Source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions. Amen. We have, everybody's, Trenton, could you please stand? Everybody's probably wondering who this young man here is. This is Trenton Ellis. He's at the Wash U Brown School, so we're glad to have him. He's an intern, so feel free to get in touch with him. He's a tremendous resource, so we're looking forward to working with him over the time that he's here. Let's give him a round of applause and welcome. We're gonna suspend with our regular order of business, take up our courtesy resolutions calendar. Alderman from the twenty-second? Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the motion for our courtesy resolutions cal-
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. President, members of the Board. I move for adoption of the courtesy resolution.
Move by Alderman from the twenty-second, entertain a second on that motion. Second about Alderman from the thirteenth. Alderman from the thirteenth, would you like to approach the dials?
Thank you. President, members of the Board, I have a resolution today in recognition of a birthday of the Honorable Carol Howard. It says, whereas, do you want to come up here? You're welcome. Bring your flower, bring your flowers. I said, whereas it has come to the attention of the Honorable Board of the Aldermen of City of St. Louis of the day of the birth of the Honorable Carol Howard, who was born on Wednesday, January 25th. I left the date out. You can sunshine it, the day. It is a matter of public record, and it is a milestone birthday, but I didn't want to put it in here. Whereas birthdays are a time to reflect and laugh and poke fun at about the mounting years and share significant stories about the honoree, and whereas Carol Howard attended Bishop DeBerg High School in the City of St. Louis and graduated in 1968, do the math, whereas she married, she married Larry John Howard in 1969, is the mother of five wonderful children, Sharon, Larry, Joe, Ed, Laura, and Nick. And whereas she is also the grandmother of eight and the great-grandmother of one. I said, whereas Carol in 1977 graduated from Harris Stowe Teachers College and earned a Bachelor of Arts in Education. And in 1986, she received a Master's Degree in Teaching from Webster, in 95, a Master's of Education from the University of Missouri-Amsville, and a Doctorate Degree in Education from Maryville in 2009. Now, do you remember, I said she has five children, okay? Carol also worked in St. Louis Public School System during this time for thirty-plus years as a teacher, and principal, and later on in the administration. Whereas, her commitment to the community shows no boundaries, and she has also served as a Fourteenth Ward Committee Woman since 1998 and until 2010, and has been Alderman from 2010 until present. Carol loves to travel and play golf, and in 2017, she was honored as Alumni of the Year from Harris Stowe State University. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis pass our deliberation, recognize the birthday of the Honorable Carol Howard, and so forth. And I just want to say one thing. I said, I think she's done okay, Boomer.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Tell you, I learned something today. I didn't know that was Dr. Howard. Alderman from the twenty-fifth into the twenty-third.
I would like to have my name added as a co-sponsor to the resolution.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
And also, a really wonderful, wonderful birthday wish, Carol, for all the best this year ahead and all the years ahead of that. It has been an honor to work with you down here, and it's been my pleasure to get to know you and become your friend over the years as well. I can't believe that you are as old as Beth says that you are, but I'm not saying how old that is, but, you know, I feel like you're my contemporary, and so, you know, you certainly don't look or act your age. You've got an air of immaturity about you, I suppose. An air of immaturity. But, you know, seriously though, it really has been a joy to get to know you over the years, and I wish you all the best in the year ahead.
Alderman from the twenty-third.
Is 29 a milestone? Because that's what she told me. I asked. She said, I'm 29. And also, I would motion that we do this in bank.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-third, second about Alderman from the twenty-fifth, that we make this resolution in bank. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Alderwoman from the six.
Thank you, Mr. President. Happy Birthday, Alderwoman Howard. Thank you so much. You and the former Alderman from the twenty-fourth were the two lone individuals who spent time with me before I was elected for the first time and endorsed me, knocked on doors with me. And I've learned a lot from you, and also had a lot of fun getting to know you over the years. If you are not familiar, the Alderwoman from the fourteenth is quite the adventurer and has gone on the Mississippi River with me, I think twice, right? Yeah, and is fond of the outdoors, just as I am, and has provided some great advice for me, for my kids, or anything, boys. You look amazing. You are in better shape than I'll probably ever be, and it's really exciting to be able to celebrate this birthday with you.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-second.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I want to certainly say happy birthday to Alderwoman Carol Howard. It just seems like yesterday, you were my oldest daughter principal. Where did the time go?
Yeah.
But congratulations.
Alderman from the tenth.
Carol, this means I won't have to check your ID at Milo's anymore. You're okay.
Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh.
Well, happy birthday, Golden Girl. And so now, they have officially put me in the Golden Girl Club. So, happy birthday, and I look forward to us celebrating.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? I think we need, Alderman from the twenty-sixth.
From the newbie. But thank you for your service and your dedication to your community, which I learned a lot too today through your resolution. And I look to you, I look back at you sometimes to learn things, so thank you and happy amazing birthday.
Alderwoman from the eleventh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say happy birthday, and I've enjoyed when I get the privilege to ride around with you and the Alderwoman from the thirteenth.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? You know, one of the things that we've learned today is that we've been calling her Alderwoman Carol Howard, but we need to call her Alderwoman Dr. Howard. Right? I had no idea that you received your doctorates. I think we need to amend your nameplate to say Dr. Carol Howard on there. If you earned it, let's put it out there. And congratulations on all that you've done over the years that you've been in office. I've had an opportunity to work with you every since the day you come in office, and it's just been a pleasure. And I cannot thank you enough for what you've done in education, you know, by dedicating your life and your entire work career to education and to the betterment of our youth, because that is our future. And being able to do that, and all you've achieved, going and getting your masters and your doctors, and with five kids, that says something. So let's give her a big round of applause and congratulations.
I just want to say thanks, and the idea that, you know, I've been on this planet this long amazes me some days, but I've been very blessed, and I am very fortunate to have the opportunities I've had, and I look to give back. And thank you for recognizing my birthday. I appreciate it. I hope I have many more. But, you know, I think I'm old, but I don't feel so old, so anyway, thank you so much.
Can other members, can other members join us up here for the birthday picture? How you doing?
Awesome. Thank you. How are you?
You're welcome. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolutions calendar. All in favor, signify by saying aye. With that, we will return to our regular order of business. Introduction of honored guests. Any introduction of honored guests? Any introduction of honored guests? Any introduction of honored guests? Aldermen from the tenth, like to wrap us up?
I'm waiting for all the guests to sit down, sir. As we're gathered here on January 24th, this is Beer Can Appreciation Day. It is on this day. In 1935, the first can of beer was ever manufactured. If you're wondering, it was called Kruger Beer in Richmond, Virginia. But more importantly, on this day, in 1983, the Alderman from the twenty-third's favorite TV show started The A-Team.
Mr. T, approval of the minutes.
Approved of the minutes, January the 17th, 2020.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move to approve the minutes of January the 17th, 2020.
Moving by Alderman from the twenty-second, second about Alderman from the tenth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carry. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda, and has been placed in the Alderman's mailbox.
We dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? We'll dispense with line items eight through 10, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill 193, sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus and ordinance repealing ordinance number 70333 and containing an emergency clause, whereas ordinance number 70333 became effective August 14th, 2016. As such, the ordinance was designed to create a centralized process for traffic complaints received by the City of St. Louis, so that they could be managed in an efficient manner to be called the City of St. Louis Traffic Calming Policy. Board Bill 194, number not used this session. Board Bill 195, sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus and ordinance directing the directive streets to permanently close barricade or otherwise impede the flow of traffic in the north-south bound approximately 240 linear feet alley located between Palm Street and Lexington Avenue in City Block 4456, approximately 95 linear feet east of King's Highway, Memorial Boulevard, east curb line, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 196, sponsored by Alderman Vacoro and ordinance establishing a three-way stop sign at the intersection of Mordeau Avenue and Macklin Avenue, regulating all traffic traveling eastbound on Mordeau Avenue and Macklin Avenue, and regulating all traffic traveling northbound and southbound on Macklin Avenue at Mordeau Avenue and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 197, sponsored by Alderwoman Murphy and ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for 3808 Wilmington Avenue redevelopment area. Board Bill 198, sponsored by Alderwoman Matthews and ordinance pertaining to vendors establishing comprehensive rules and regulations for vendors within the Kingsway, East Kingsway, West Penn Rose, and Mark Twain neighborhoods, prohibiting street vendors within, except within designated City Park vending districts, established in the City Park vending district within Kingsway, East Kingsway, West Penn Rose, and Mark Twain neighborhoods prohibiting vending on any LRA-owned property, expressly prohibiting the distribution or sale of newspapers, pamphlets, hand bills, or other written or printed matter sold or distributed for the purpose of disseminating news, information, in the King's Highway Memorial Boulevard median that runs from the southern end at Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard to the northern end at West Florissant Avenue, requiring the directive streets to post no vending, no soliciting signs in both of the medians of King's Highway Memorial Boulevard, intersecting Natural Bridge, promulgating rules and regulations for vending within vending districts containing definitions, a penalty clause, a severability clause, and an emergency clause. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the Streets Committee, Board Bill 193, 195, 196, and 198. To Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bill 197, that is the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following board bill was reported out of public safety with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill 189, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderwoman Green, Alderman Gunther, Alderwoman Middlebrook, Alderman Vacoro, and Alderwoman Rice, an ordinance prohibiting the carrying of concealed firearms by persons who are subject to restraining order or who have been convicted of misdemeanor crime of domestic violence, as provided in this ordinance, and the firearm such person is in receipt of has been shipped or transported in interstate or foreign commerce as prohibited by Title 18, Section 922G, eight and nine of the United States Code and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of second reading, report of standing committees.
We'll dispense with line item 14, perfection consent.
Board Bill 186, sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Fire Commissioner to enter into and execute a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, Federal Emergency Management Agency through the Missouri Department of Homeland Security for the purpose of funding to support the cybersecurity coordinator position at the St. Louis Fusion Center and to expand funds by entering into contracts or otherwise for grant purposes and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 187, sponsored by Alderman Ornowitz, Alderman Todd, Alderwoman Navarro, Alderwoman Rice, and Alderwoman Tyus, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of the Department of Human Services to accept a grant award from the St. Louis Community Foundation in the amount of $26,000 for the current fiscal year and to expand those funds for the City of St. Louis U Matter, appropriating such funds and authorizing the Director of Department of Human Services upon approval of the Board of Estiment and Apportement to expand such funds as permitted by the grant award agreement and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 141, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estiment and Apportement making a supplement to appropriation to the annual budget ordinance 70963 for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2020, amounting to the sum of $250,000 and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
Entertained a second, second about Alderman from the twelfth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill 107, committee sub, sponsored by Alderman Mohammed, Alderwoman Tyus, Alderman Vacoro, Alderman Todd, Alderwoman Davis, and Alderman Boyd. An ordinance directing the City of St. Louis Division of Police establish nine police districts, the boundaries of which shall be drawn in accordance with the map set forth in Exhibit A attached heretofore, and to the extent of the commission of the City of St. Louis Division of Police deems reasonable and appropriate in the light of changing community and law enforcement needs, Division of Police resources, including officers, shall be apportioned equally amongst the nine police districts and each police district.
At the request of sponsor, please place Board Bill 107, committee substitute, on the perfection and formal calendar.
So noted. That is the extent of board bills for perfection.
Third reading consent.
Board Bill 88, committee sub as amended. Board Bill 171, floor sub.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move for adoption, excuse me, the third reading consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from the twenty-second, entertain a second. Second about Alderman from the tenth, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Kotar, Alderwoman Rice, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Valmer, Alderwoman Martin, Alderman Ornowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderman Odenberg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Todd, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacoro, Alderman Orion, Alderman Con, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Navarro, President Reed, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderman Kotar, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Con. Twenty-three aye votes.
By vote, staying the motion, Alderman from the twenty-second and third read, and finally passed the aforementioned bills. Third reading, report of engrossment.
We have none.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bill 86, committee sub as amended, and Board Bill 171, floor sub.
All other business being suspended, the President shall, in open session, affix his signature heretofore First reading resolutions.
Resolution 211, sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Todd, Alderman Mohammed, Alderwoman Green, Alderwoman Rice, Alderwoman Hubbard, and Alderwoman Pam Boyd, opposing state intervention of local government residency requirement for public employees.
Alderwoman from the first, you recognize on the first reading of Resolution 211.
Mr. President, members of the Board, although this is a very long resolution, it's very important, and I want it read, and it was already reacted to in the state, so it's having, it's a required impact already, because they, and I just want to tell you this, so they changed their board, they changed their legislation to say the whole state. When they did that, the rest of the state said, oh, no, you're not gonna do that to us, so read my resolution, because it's having the desired impact.
Madam Clerk, please read Resolution 211.
Resolution 211, opposing state intervention of local government residency residency requirements for public employees. Whereas in 1875, introduced constitutional municipal home rule, St. Louis City was one of the first cities extended the home rule privilege. Home rule granted communities the first right to frame, adopt, and amend their own charter. The chief goals of home rule have been to prevent or minimize legislative interference in matters that are primarily of local concern, to permit the local communities to adopt type and form a government they desire, to provide the cities with sufficient powers to meet the increasing needs for local services with the necessity of repeating, seeking new authority from the legislature, as they are compelled to do when charters are legislative enacted. The Charter of City of St. Louis was adopted by the vote of citizens on June 30th, 1914. And whereas home rule does not imply complete freedom from state interference, the real decisive test is whether the matter involved is such concern to state as a whole that legislative interferences is justified at the expense of local autonomy. Whereas Article 8, Section 2 of the City Charter entitled residency requirement states in pertinent part, in addition to other qualifications required by the Charter, except as provided herein below, all offices and employees must reside in the City of St. Louis, and all employees and offices must retain, I'm sorry, must maintain residency within the City of St. Louis during the entire tenure of their employment or their appointment, as an officer failing or ceasing to reside shall forfeit their office or employment. Whereas the City of St. Louis Police has been under state control since Civil War, while most of other cities and towns in Missouri, with the exception of Kansas City area, had their own control of their own police department. On November 6th, 2012, by Initiative Proposition A, the voters of state of Missouri voted to return local control of the police back to City of St. Louis. Proposition A was codified by Section 84.344 of the Missouri State Statute entitled Establishment of Municipal Police Force Authorized. And whereas Proposition A allowed the City of St. Louis to take over its police force through a series of steps outlined in Missouri State Statute, Section 84.344. Essentially, it was a contract between the state of Missouri and the City of St. Louis regarding how city could get control of the police, of St. Louis police officers, I'm sorry, of the St. Louis City Police. The city had to take over the debt of the police. Ownership and liability for contracts had been made, provide for life insurance, medical benefits for police, and make such coverage available for their spouse and dependents along with various other obligations. The city compelled all the requirements. The City of St., the St. Louis Department of Police Commissioners was dissolved, and the City of St. Louis Police became the City Municipal Police Force. In, I'm sorry, in 2013, St. Louis obtained local control of its police force. And whereas the requirement that city employees live in the City of St. Louis is purely a local concern, throughout the last thirty years, there have been several public offices, I'm sorry, several public votes by the city, by the citizens of St. Louis on the residency requirement specifically as to relate to the police. In the instance, the citizen vote is overwhelmingly to keep the residency requirement for the police and others who work for or represent the city in place. Whereas on or about September thirteenth, twenty nineteen, a majority of the members of the Board of Ald, Alderman, the legislative body of the City of St. Louis voted against the bill attempting to place the matter of police resident, police residency requirement before the city, before the citizens once again for a public vote. And whereas on Tuesday, January the fourteenth, twenty twenty, Merillita Cruzen, Public Safety Director Jimmy Edwards, and Police Commander John Hayden, who was a civil servant, traveled to the state Capitol in Jefferson City to testify before committee and lobby the Missouri General Assembly and the Governor in, in support of overturning the City Residency Charter requirement, parts of Missouri State Statute, Section eighty-four point three four four, and vote the legislative branch of the, of the city. And whereas the state purports to have a state interest of public safety for citizens of St. Louis as a reason to intercede in a strictly local matter for the citizens, citizens of St. Louis, the state alleges public safety interest ignores the fact that the members of the Board of Alderman who represents the entire City of St. Louis have a public safety concern for the citizens of St. Louis and are the, the, are the people most close to the citizens, to the needs of the citizens of our city. Whereas the majority of the members of the Board of Alderman also notes other compelling interests the city has for the residency rule of the City Charter to remain. These compelling interests include the geographical proximity of the police to live in a city, a concern for police-community relations as a special relationship exists between police officers and communities they patrol. A policeman's presence in the city both on and off duty assures residents that a specially trained person will be available immediately if needed. A concern for residents support and tax in exchange for providing jobs, food, and clothing for the police and avoiding total disengagement between personal life and working life of the police. The residency requirement bears a rational relationship to many legitimate St. Louis city interests such as reduction of residence unemployment, promotion of ethnic balance in the city, availability of trained manpower in emergencies, reduction in employee tardiness and absenteeism, increased quality of worker performance, and city's economic benefit from local expenditures of city's employed salaries. Whereas if the Missouri General Assembly and the Governor vote to amend Missouri State Statute eight four point three four four, while the City of St. Louis to its financial detriment has already fulfilled the requirement of said statute, then the Missouri General Assembly and the Governor will be breaching the agreement and attempting a regulatory taking the City of St. Louis Police Department while leaving the financial burden of paying the police payroll and retirement benefits and lawsuits which represent a significant percent of St. Louis City budget to taxpaying citizens of the City of St. Louis. Now therefore, let it be resolved that this honorable Board of Alderman remain, I'm sorry, reminds the Mayor, Public Safety Director, Police Commander, Attorney General of the State of Missouri, the Missouri General Assembly, and the Missouri Governor that we, the members of the Board of Alderman, oppose the state interceding in the strictly local decision regarding residency of public employees. All those who enter into the employment with the City of St. Louis can, can, contractually surrender for the mutual benefit of employer and employees, the employee's right to live outside of the city limits while employed by the city, and Missouri General Assembly should, should not interfere with the agreement. The St. Louis Legislative Branch of Government, the Board of Alderman, took a vote as recently as September thirteenth, twenty nineteen, regarding the charter's residency requirement. Be it further resolved that this honorable, honorable Board requests that if the Missouri General Assembly votes to invalidate the St. Louis City Charter residency requirement, that the Missouri General Assembly should assume all debt, liability, and payment of benefits, especially the approximate a hundred and thirty-five million dollars a year the City of St. Louis depends on police payroll, benefits, and lawsuits, repay the city for all debts and liabilities the city assume or become responsible for under Missouri State Statute, Section eight four three four four. Be it further resolved that this honorable, honorable Board require the clerk of the Board to send this copy of this resolution to the Mayor, Public Safety Director, Police Commander, the Attorney General of Missouri, the Missouri General Assembly, and the Governor of the State of Missouri reminding that the St. Louis is a Missouri constitutional home room city, home rule city, requesting that they not sign into law support of vote for legislation invalidating the St. Louis City Charter residency requirement, requesting that they uphold Section eight four point three four of the State, of the Missouri State Statute as written, requesting that the state not intercede in this strictly local matter, and requesting that they not overrule the elected legislative body of the City of St. Louis, which is one of the three branches of local government. Introduced on this twenty-fourth day of January by the Honorable Sharon Tyres, Christina Ingraccia, Brandon Bosley, Jesse Todd, John Collins, Muhammad, Megan Green, Tamika Hubbard, and Pam Boyd, adopted this twenty-fourth day, twenty twenty, as attested.
Alderman from the first, you recognize.
Mr. President, members of, uh, members of the board, I'm moved to suspend the rules. I'm sorry, not suspend the rules, I mean, okay, I request unanimous consent.
There's been an objection to unanimous consent.
Then I'd move to suspend the rules.
It's been moved by Alderman from the first that we suspend the rules, entertain a second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the fifteenth, any discussion? It's been moved and seconded, Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Tyres, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingraccia, Alderman Kotar, Alderman Rice, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Volmer, Alderman Martin, Alderman Ornowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Odenberg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Todd, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Muhammad, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacoro, Alderman Orion, Alderman Con, Alderman Clark Hubbard, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Navarro, President Reed, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Kotar, Alderman Rice, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Muhammad. Fifteen aye votes and eight no votes.
By vote, you fail to stand the motion of Alderman from the first. So Alderman from first, would you like to move to send it to committee?
Mr. President, in fact, I, I chair a committee called the Rules and Resolution Committee and I would like to send it to the Resolutions Committee, thank you very much.
It's been moved by Alderman from the first that we send Resolution two eleven to the Rules Committee. Entertain a second on that motion, second by Alderman from the sixth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries, Madam Clerk, please assign Resolution two eleven to the Rules Committee.
So noted. That is the extent of first reading of resolutions.
Second reading.
We have none.
Missed landings and unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Wednesday, January the twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, Rules will have a meeting ten a.m. in the Leisure Room, Friday, January the thirty-first, full board meeting, ten a.m. in the chambers.
Any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'm going to have a Rules Committee, a special Rules Committee Monday morning because we're going to bring the state reps here to talk about what happened down in Jefferson City and trying to change our rules, so I'm going to have it at nine o'clock in the morning, Monday morning. I don't usually do that because we normally have them on Wednesdays and we're still going to have our Wednesday regular meeting, but this is going to be to discuss the resolution.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements, Alderman from the twenty-sixth?
I just had a couple of announcements. First, the Urban League Save Our Sons is having their Calling All Black Men to Action Town Hall this Saturday, January twenty-fifth at Harrisville State University. Our own colleagues, John Muhammad and Brandon Bosley will be on there amongst a number of other African-American males. Reginald Garth will be there giving financial literacy information, so it'll be a good event for the entire community again Saturday, January twenty-fifth from one to four p.m. The Urban League Save Our Sons Calling All Black Men to Action Town Hall at Harrisville State University. And I also want to mention, thank you again, Louis, I'm sorry, President of the Board of Alderman for letting us do the Two Death Women Initiative Personal Hygiene Item Drive here in the City Hall from today till next Friday, we'll be collecting personal hygiene items. And I would like to say thank you to the following offices for coming on board and accepting a donation box, starting with yourself at the Board of Alderman, License Collector Mavis Thompson, Treasurer Tashara Jones, Collector of Revenue Greg Daly, Collector of Deeds Michael Butler, and also the Building Division, Parks and Recs Department, CSB, and the Forestry Department have all, are all on board, so please participate.
Now, thank you for getting that, for organizing that. Can you tell people how they can donate and what type of items are you looking for?
So they're looking for personal hygiene items, full-size personal hygiene items for women that are in transition, mostly women that have been victims of domestic violence or human and sex trafficking. And so what they do is create these love packages with, have items in them for when they're going in transitional housing and things of that nature, toothpaste, shampoo, combs, makeup, lotion, deodorant, soap, anything that you can think of that they might need when they go into these situations in these homes like that. And again, they are looking for full-size, but you can go to any of your dollar stores and get plenty of those things. And if everybody participates, we'll have more than enough.
Right, and to donate, they just drop off at any of these locations?
They can drop off, it's a little competition going on within City Hall. You heard me name all the different departments, so we're going to see whichever department donates the most products is going to get a trophy, they're going to get an award. But there will be boxes, there are boxes that were delivered this morning to all the departments and again, it's going to go on from now to next Friday, so hopefully everybody participates.
The board, we're going to, we have to win that.
We have to win that.
All right, thank you, congratulations. Alderman from the twenty-fifth?
President, I, I would like to make sure that we have on the calendar Parks and Environmental Matters Committee meeting for Tuesday, February fourth at nine a.m.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
Any further discussion, any further discussion or announcements, any further announcements? Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Yes, Mr. President, members of board, I move to excuse the following Alderman for necessary absence, the Alderman or Alderman from the third, fourth, fifth, seventh, nineteenth, and twenty-first.
Been moved by Alderman from twenty-second, second by Alderman from the tenth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose?
No.
Motion carries. Alderman from twenty-second, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, members of board, I move to adjourn to next Friday, January the thirty-first, twenty twenty.
Moved by Alderman from twenty-second, second by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, stand adjourned.